Hey, it's May 1st, sun's out. My name is Grease. Time to start the caucus.
All right.
Our first guest tonight is Larry Baughman, Poland Historical Society, to address us on historic preservation. Larry, come on up.
I'm working. Pass it around. Pass it around.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. And Mr. Letancio, thank you for getting me on the agenda tonight to speak about historic preservation. As some of you know, we were at a meeting last night with the Toro Group. Why, I think it's an important issue to talk about grants and funding and where money can come from. Probably not going to talk about anything you don't already know. Most of you have probably been through some of this before, but I've been involved with some of this through the Historical Society, and as a result, thought I would share what I have. And this is just a list of kind of a checklist of different things that are available. And as you've seen, in the past, some of the Poland Historical Society's programs and projects and events, we've been quite involved with the preservation of our buildings, our landmarks, putting up historical markers, and education of our children. Matter of fact, this week, today, we started with the Little Red Schoolhouse, three sessions this week with the second graders, and that's going on where the other two, the other three groups are later this month from Poland Union. And we have a tour coming up that we're going to be taking the third graders from Davos, about 120 of kids around touring our village and so on. So those are kind of the things that we try to do to keep the growth of preservation and focus of historic Poland in mind. On April 14th, my wife and I attended a log, at the Loghurst in Canfield. It was an all-day, six-county, northeast Ohio regional meeting put on and sponsored by the Columbus Historical Connection. And the purpose of that was to talk about preservation and grants and so on, what's available. So we've had a couple of these sessions, and that's why I thought it would be good to kind of bring you up to date with things that I'm aware of. So this sheet's kind of, all the items probably that we talked about, even though I made this sheet up from years past of information that we have. First on the list there, if you just take a look at that, is the Ohio History Fund Grant. And that's for nonprofit organizations, okay? And that's a 60-40% match, and that's the one that I've talked to some people in the past where I wrote up a grant in 2015 for $10,500 in order to do a restoration of our windows in the Little Red Schoolhouse. They're date back to 1858. We wanted to restore it to original condition. Tore them all apart, put them all back together, put pieces of wood in to make them just like they were in 1858. And that thing about that grant is, that's presented by the History Fund, and they only had $100,000, but through the state of Ohio, they had 43 applicants apply for it. And so they selected the top 13. I was lucky enough to be receiving that grant for that, to get that $6,300. And I knew going in that that was kind of a long putt, you know? I knew the competition was stiff. They told me about that. It's tough to get that grant, but it goes to show if you don't put, you're putting in, you're not going to get it, but we did get it. So, and again, this is for nonprofit organizations. Residential applicants or individuals cannot apply for that. Number two and number three, you're familiar with the state and federal tax credits, and those are available for businesses or income-producing historic buildings and properties, which are listed on the National Register of Historic Places. The state provides 25% of grant. The federal government can provide 20% grant for your project, and even if your building is not historic, you could even receive a 10% grant. Note that I have web links on there so you can take a look and look it up by getting on the web and seeing some of the information. There's phone numbers. I've contacted probably each of those individuals that's on that list and talked to them about their grants and so on. And those are the contacts that, you know, you get information on. Thing about our historic district is that the historic district goes from the farm station all the way up to the Inn on the Green on South Main Street. And that, all the buildings on that side, if they meet the character and the charm and the architectural requirements, they would be able to be listed on, they are considered listed on, as other than individual on that National Register of Historic Places. So it meets the requirements on it, as long as they still are in good shape. A case in point was, the old Johnson Hardware was on there in 1974, or 1985, when it was put on. And then they tore it down and they rebuilt it. Now, present day, not quite sure if that really meets the charming characteristic of what the historic buildings are supposed to represent. So that might not qualify, and that's an example of that. The other thing is that we have homes that are for sale. Mayor Madrid's Homes for Sale, the Inn at the Greens for Sale. Those are good examples where there are businesses in the commercial district of that historic district, and therefore, they can qualify for tax credits. That is a good thing to kind of try to get people coming here to be interested in buying that and close the deal on some of those people that are really interested. And I think that's one of the things that I'm looking forward to, the village here maybe, to help out with some of that information. Take this list, try to present it to people, say, the different boards that's involved here, say, the zoning board coming in, people are coming here, they're trying to get permits, they're trying to put a business in one of those new places. See if they, you could present them the information that they might apply for tax credit so they close the deal. And just like, if it's a current property owner, you know, if they want to invest in a business or something on that historic district, how can we help them out by having the money to close the deal on that? And the other thing too, I don't know how you relate to the Realtors Association, you know, with Realtors in there. How can you pass on the information in the Realtor Association so that they can maybe say, hey, come to Poland, we've got some good advantages if you can qualify for it? Next item is capital campaign. Of course, that's a big project. That's a huge endeavor, usually generally $100,000 up to millions. Good example, Bill Lawson. I didn't tell you when the, we had a lot of speakers on these at that Loghurst out there. Bill Lawson and Linda Koska talked about capital campaigns and what it is. So that's, of course, where you generally, you have to get a consultant to look over the project. You might have to have a feasibility project to make a study on that, and then generally, you have to have endowments to keep the supporting to those particular ventures that you get into. Good examples are the Arms Museum, that Bill was involved, built heavily, and also the Tyler Center. Those are big projects, but it could be smaller. So there might be some opportunities for people in the village or some businesses or something. Certified Local Government Grants. Now, that's offered by the state, and that's a cooperation with the tax credits as well as the National Park Service. Now, that was one of the things when I wrote up my grant for the Historical Society. They're pretty tough on the requirements of that. And so if you meet those kind of standards, you can quite often get that particular thing. As I understand it, the village is not certified by this situation.
What does it take to become a certified local government?
Pardon?
Do you know what it takes to become a local certified local government?
I don't have all the particulars to that. I've heard comments in the past that people looked into it, they did want to stay involved because then you have regulations you have to meet and all that sort of thing. I have no idea what that's all about, but it's a 60-40, it's a 60-40 split, so it's a pretty good, pretty good amount of tax credits. I think, I think if you could, I think somebody here should look into it.
Yeah, we will.
And maybe that's something that could be certified. So there's pros and cons to it from what I've heard. Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, we talked a little bit about that last night and with the Toro Group when we were over at Mike Thompson's house. And Woolville's a good example. They've got $98,000 right now to do paving of roads and bike trails. Last year, they got $300,000 grant to improve some of their homes and do some other things. And they are qualified under the low and moderate income. The thing though is, there's stipulation in there that when you're applying for a CDBG, they only have to issue 70% of their funds to low and moderate income. So that means there's 30% there that could be up for grabs for some people. So that shouldn't, that shouldn't say, don't put something in, because you might be able to qualify for it under that situation. And the thing that I'm looking at is right now, and Mrs. Edeker is back here with the Board of Education, and, you know, with some of the things that's going on with the schools where we're probably going to have three schools closing or being sold or whatever. I'm concerned about the Poland Union School, and I'm concerned about Poland Middle School should it at some point in time also not be used as a school? How can they be repurposed? CDBG is a perfect example where you can utilize that to help repurpose it. It's right in their bylaws and the federal laws that I looked up that, you know, school repurposing's a good use for that. So take a look at that. I think that's a very good example where we could help out, maybe to try to figure out how we could maybe make Poland Union as an example, going back to 1985 when Dr. Soren made it a community center. As I indicated last night, I saw a write-up that he did several years later where he said it was self-sufficient, you know? They were actually making money with some of the people that were renting in there, leasing in there to do some of their businesses and so on. So that wasn't a drain on the economy or the Board of Education in that case. The other thing is, we need to all work together. Toro Groups heading up with the Board of Education, I believe, they also had a meeting with them and made some suggestions of things that could happen at these buildings. This is where I think the Poland Historical Society is trying to, as I'm doing here, trying to say, how else can we help to, what information do you need from us from a historical standpoint to help do some of these things to preserve the buildings we need? And go on with the other groups. There's other nonprofit organizations in the community that might be able to help out. There's businesses, there's private investors. What can we do to preserve our historic structures and keep them attractive so that we can bring people into our community, make the community grow, all working together to do this? And I'm providing this as you and also the township, you know, as our community leaders. How can you take this information where this might be an enticement for people to come here? So use this list, see how you can foster the people and the businesses in the community here to make this town more attractive so we do get people coming into it. Any questions?
So you haven't spoken to the school yet about any of these?
No, I haven't, but I have a meeting on the 14th, I believe, it's still the 14th, at the Little Red Schoolhouse where we're going to, I'm going to talk a little bit about this.
Especially that CDBG sounds like a good thing to our class.
Yeah. So that's coming up. Just in closing, I just had a couple other questions if I may ask them. The preservation, we were down at the White Bridge at the cemetery there. How's that preservation project going?
Martha Littleboard, first today.
Yeah, Martha, you were there too.
We are waiting for ODOT to contact us now to set up that first meeting.
Okay.
But that's, it's...
As I understand, we've got some money raised and so on?
Rebecca raised $17,500 of the required $18,000 for the initial engineering. And so what we've now done is requested that ODOT take the first step that they need to take, which is set up an initial meeting with us about the engineering requirements.
Okay.
And we're still waiting to hear from them.
Okay. Just was curious on that. The other thing, we have a, we have a good and a bad problem at the Little Red School House. Our membership is over 100 people now, and we have 40, some people coming out there to meetings and so on, and we're out of parking. We've actually turned people away because they couldn't find a place to park on particularly rainy or snowy days. So we're putting in a new parking lot, adding to it, I should say, or putting an adjacent one on the other side from that drive. And, you know, it's kind of, we're just in the process of getting bids and so on to do that, and it's, you know, we're estimating it's going to be $5,000 to $10,000. We may just go this year with just getting the basin and the gravel and so on and do that for a year or two and then do the paving another year, but one of the things, this all has to be from donations and so on. Poland Township donates $5,000 of their Republic Services money to us to help us maintain the buildings and things like that, and that goes to for our utilities and other things. And I was just wondering if I could throw out the, if there's any chance that this year you could help us out with maybe $500,000, whatever you can do to help, help with the parking lot.
You were saying 500 slash 1,000, not 500.
Yes. I thought maybe you thought that.
She died, I like that.
But they were, very good. Not 500, 500, do it now.
We can look at it very much, basically. Well, I don't want to just say that we can absolutely change it.
Yeah. And, you know, anytime through the course of the year would be helpful. We've gone a little ahead with this.
Good idea, and I wanted to mention for your report.
Thank you.
One of the things that, I own one of the homes on South Main Street. One of the things that's been difficult for us to do, we wanted to some, we explored looking into some historical tax ideas, we had to bring back, we couldn't put in new windows for energy efficiency, and we had to act to kind of keep the, I forget what the terminology they use for it.
The aesthetics.
Yeah, and it's expensive. It almost, it almost makes it a deal, for us, what we wanted to do, it made it a deal killer. But it's a great idea for certain, almost for homes that really need more work, and I think it's great for the income-producing block, and I think we're talking about it.
From what I understand, it's not a drop-dead issue in terms of having to restore the windows to the original condition. It depends on the condition of those windows. It depends on what, why you're trying to put in new windows, for example, for energy efficiency. And sometimes it'll go through. And all I can say is, you look at those grants...
Well, I expect a pure example for someone maybe looking at the Inn. The bridge is a fantastic idea, but like for us, what we were trying to do wasn't, that doesn't mean it fits for somebody else.
Right.
So I thought it would come about, something you wanted to do, and it didn't make any sense financially.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Leah is on, she's running late, but I think she invited Kathy and Mr. Rumble. Are you guys here to speak about the garden club?
Yes.
Okay, come on up. Hello.
My name is Kathy Lynn. I live at 24 Autobahn Lane. I'm here to talk about Poland Village Gardeners. We'll be celebrating our 75th anniversary this year, and we're still trying to figure out what we're going to do other than pop a champagne cork, but we're hoping to do something a little bit special. First of all, I'd like to thank village administration for the help that they've given us and the support for the garden club. We've been working on your property for some time, and we hope you find it satisfactory. We get nothing but wonderful comments about the garden itself, and we hope to continue to do that. Secondly, I wanted to let you know some of the, because we're not really a mystery, but we don't do a lot of public presentations about the garden club. We sort of work behind the scenes. So I thought it might be interesting for you to hear about how we spend our money. We raise money through a variety of forms, the main one being our Memorial Paver Program. And there are groshers over there, but if you notice under the pergola, there are pavers. And we asked for a $100 donation, and we engraved a paver and installed it as a lasting legacy for people. And that would be for Memorial Graduation, even Mother's Day coming up, so keep that in mind. But I want to let you know, last year, we spent about $3,000 working on the gardens. $665 of that was spent basically to keep our organization afloat. We have to pay organizational fees, government fees, we have to do a lot of filings, we have program fees, postage, and we also donate to other organizations. We give them gift baskets to raffle off, et cetera. So we like to keep participating whenever we can in the community. So that leaves about $2,270, and that all went into the garden. You may have noticed that the benches were completely redone. They were starting to rust out, paint was peeling, so we made arrangements to have them repaired, resoldered in some cases, and repainted, and that was a cost of 600. We also did the tree, the trees are beautiful, by the way. Ornamental pear trees are all in bloom now. Well, we contracted with Davy to come in, do a lot of pruning, and also do fertilization. We're not going to do that every year, so it's not an annual expense. We're going to do it every other year to keep the trees in good shape, and also to shape them so that they don't become overgrown, get rid of any extra branches, et cetera. And the other was lawn care, scrub control, fertilization, and mulch. We mulch all around the gardens and the perimeter. Then the balance was for the plants. Every year we go out, we try and renew our perennials and buy new annuals, bring in new fertilization, plant in the plots, and we also do decorating. Hi, Leah.
Hi.
I hope it, so we do, I hope you like the decorations. We do a seasonal thing coming up. Now, in the past, we've relied a lot on the village, maintenance workers to help us. They would come out, and they still do mowing, but they would, you know, help with the mulch, et cetera, and we shared some expenses, and that was much appreciated. The past three or four years, that's sort of gone by the wayside, and so we as an organization obviously wanted to keep doing the mulch, et cetera. So we just sort of did it ourselves, and thanks to the local Poland Bulldog Football Team, we have a lot of excellent labor. When the mulch comes in and they come, and for a couple slices of pizza, they just take over and do everything. So going forward, it's our hope that we can continue to work cooperatively with council. And certainly, if there's something we're doing that is out of line or, you know, isn't aesthetically pleasing, please let us know. But we try and keep with the historic aesthetic in the garden. Coming up, just to let you know, this month, and I know that the waiver program is on the agenda here, so I'm going to hang around and listen to that, but we are going to our first, I think it's next week, Laura. Laura Rumble is our maintenance chairperson with Amy Davies. So we're going to be coming in and cleaning up the garden, uprooting dead plants. We've got a lot of winter overkill. A lot of the plants did not survive, so that'll be a little more expensive, but we're going to clean that up, and then at the end of the month, we're going to do plantings of the pots, annuals, new perennials, et cetera. So I'm asking for your continued support. Thank you for everything you've done in the past, and if there's, if there are any questions about our organization and what we hope to do, I can answer them.
Thank you for being here, really appreciate it.
Thank you.
I appreciate you all getting a jump on this.
You're welcome.
Sorry, I was going to bring you warmer weather sooner, but...
I know.
That's the only thing you couldn't provide.
Well, we had a crazy Easter time this year, and so our first meeting was even canceled. So we're way behind schedule. I think a lot of people are with lawn care, et cetera. But come June, I'm sure you'll be impressed. So thank you.
Thank you so much. And Mrs. Rumble too, for being here today.
Really, you want to do your emergency ordinance and appropriations?
Yes. This ordinance is to amend certain appropriations that we accept for this year to accommodate the engineering services. This is for the bridge, the cemetery bridge.
Okay.
$18,000.
Do you want to do the home realty?
Sure. That's a $250 donation to the Sons of the United Confederation. This is for Memorial Day services that they will hold, and I think our guys do a few things, the police officers, the...
Everybody.
It's always a really nice presentation. Reminds us about the people who have given up their lives in this country.
All right, Sam, pick one of your shortest ones here if you want to discuss.
Well, I guess Toro would be the next thing, but I didn't realize we were going to get the...
And I can talk about the demo if you want.
Yeah, I'll talk about that. Yeah, I'll go with the plate.
Not stealing your...
I'll go with the front of the...
Yeah, when I get to my report.
You got it, that's fine. That looks good.
Do you want to do any other of these things?
Sure, the plates, as we can see, we can omit that right now. You want me to wait until I figure any results that we've done before?
We have to come.
If you have something you can do in two minutes, you can talk about it.
Let's see. Okay, may have scored. Last time, last meeting, I believe, Jay, you were going, you looking for the Attorney of Record, we doubled with it at one point?
No, I just mentioned in passing that the Attorney of Record on the plaintiff's side, I know, is, now does insurance work, and he's since moved on to several different jobs. I was just kind of thinking out loud about how the notification process will work, because once you trigger something in the PACER system, it automatically sends out notifications via email, because in federal court, it's all electronic. And so I'm just, I mean, I know where he's at, I know the new firm he's at, I'm just curious.
Which one was that, Melissa or Augustine?
I don't have my notes.
I just only have it from the, from that...
Right, I, same. Yeah, I actually printed out the docket, and I do have one additional update, we'll have about 30 seconds, that I received an email from the clerk of courts last week because I had requested a copy of the file. They informed me that the file had been transferred to the National Archives in Chicago, so I did follow up with the National Archives, requested a copy of the file. I advanced $90. That's the cost to recover it, and they'll send me a copy of the entire file on DVD. So at that point, we'll have recreated the file, and as I said, this thing will be teed up and ready to go. Should be, should be interesting.
Other two I haven't back even been forward, forward, and as far as other group homes, I'll wait for new business and permanent work.
All right, 7:30, do stand for pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with everything and justice strong. We'll call the members. Mr. Lotian, here. Mr. Mark, here. Mrs. Morgan, here. Mrs. Cernick, here. Mrs. Wilson, here. Mrs. Japp, here. Acceptance of the minutes of the previous councilman.
Make a motion that we accept the minutes. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Can you vote? Notifications of meetings and events to the public and news media.
We're going to go with May the 10th at 7:00 PM here at Village Hall unless there's a conflict otherwise.
a conflict otherwise. Okay?
Findings?
Finance is pretty well in good shape, I would say, right now.
Yeah, we're going to have to meet with them one last time, you know, Foiter Insurance, they have all the information all together. We were looking at possibly this week, the fourth, only because it's two days away and we have to get it in the bindi, or the tenth, or the week after that, so...
What time on the fourth? The fourth is what, Thursday?
Even for the...
Friday.
Yeah, this Friday.
Right, I think I can meet on Friday.
Like at four o'clock?
Uh, that is not a good time. Can we meet early or something?
I can, what about you?
I'm not going to go on the timeline.
Okay, so at least we have two... Yeah, how early?
Uh, more like, maybe one o'clock, anywhere.
Okay, so Friday, the fourth, at one. That'll be for finance. And then, that's the way it's...
I don't wait till later.
Okay, and that's the way it stands right now, I will get a hold of her and make sure that she's available, and then, if she is, I will get it in the bindi.
So, if she's not available, we have a backup?
The tenth.
The tenth, what day of the week is that?
That's a Thursday.
Mondays and Thursdays are hard for me.
Okay, then we can always go the week...
I'm going to be out of town from the fifteenth, sixteenth, seventh.
And she's out of town, I think, the eighth, ninth, no, the seventh day is the ninth, so that's why we moved to the tenth.
I can do the tenth, more like in the evening, like, say, seven?
That would be...
Ten, seven?
Is that on Thursday?
You'll agree on that, yes.
I should be home by ten, but I don't know what time.
So, the second option will be the tenth, that's that.
Okay. Okay. Okay, legislations?
Nothing scheduled. We did have a meeting we had to cancel last week, so I'll consult our members, Martha and Sam afterwards, about anything we want to be on this month. Okay?
Police committee?
Police committee, that tonight, our next meeting is in June.
Streets? Our next meeting will be Tuesday, May fifteenth, at six thirty, Village Hall. Board of ARB?
Next ARB meeting will be Monday, May seventh, seven o'clock, Village Hall.
Planning?
Plannings meeting, Wednesday, May sixteenth, seven PM, Village Hall.
Board of zoning appeals?
Nothing scheduled.
Western Reserve Joint Fire District?
Our next meeting is Wednesday, May ninth, at seven thirty, State Department.
Forest board?
May twenty-second, seven thirty, Village Hall.
And how do we order?
Thursday, May seventeen, nine AM, at the Presbyterian Church.
Sam, because he's going to get out of here, so it's a report from the zoning administrator.
No new zoning departments were issued, although there are a number of waiting in the name, but a two list of here due on one of the two oh two south Main Street, which is home sustainings alone. They're going to be doing quite an extensive locally interior remodel, where they will be changing their entrances and exits to the building, as well as some other outside, so received some of the drawings in, and the application, that since it's a partial building, will be drawn forward through the architectural review board. On the seventh, six Bottsford Street, Blackburn Home, is doing a ramp on the canopy, that also will be exterior addition, so the actual drawings actually came in today, they need to submit the application, and a site map was not included with the drawing, so I would have to get that in, and that would also go through the architectural review board, so hoping that they get in that, they get that in before the deadline for this May seventh meeting. Also, we're still waiting, there was a permit submitted for a house, that there was still waiting some documents on that one, and I don't have enough information on that one yet, and the gas station is still looking at putting in a core in the back, I've been working with Daniel Alray for a little while on that one, does not appear that he will need a variance, and he's working on drawings, that one will also go through the architectural review board, but I have not had anything submitted to go forward with that yet, so... Next scheduled architecture review board meeting will be Monday, May seventh, seven PM. As I said, I've been in contact with both architect and sign company concerning the remodel and home savings, awaiting signed permit application on that one, so... Next planning commission meeting, or, I'm sorry, planning commission meeting scheduled for Wednesday, eight forty-two, was canceled for lack of form, next meeting is Monday, May sixteenth. Investigations, JR, we're still working with, JR and I are still working on utility pool replacement at Core River Side, we are currently in the process of obtaining a quote for rerouting that service line. The homeowner has exceeded its time limit in obtaining that, getting that work done, and despite several calls to him, we're not getting anything, so we are proceeding with a quote on having that work done. I anticipate somewhere in the neighborhood two thousand dollars for that service to be done, so that pull could be removed, but more on that when I get an actual physical quote. At that time, I'll forward that to Jay, and he will attempt one more letter to the resident before we proceed with that. Also, I had a resident call from forty-four Water Street, some roofing questions, was able to handle that one. Forty-three Meadow Acres, there was an inquiry from the company regarding the outstanding fees are fine, so hopefully that one is the larger house on Green Meadow Acres, I don't think that will see some action. And a problem with two thirty Evergreen trash receptacle, but talked with the homeowner, and that was just basically a switch in trash days, and...
I know, what was the problem, they were sitting out?
They were sitting, well, a overly concerned neighbor, how do I put it?
I mean, we don't have any ordinance, it's where they have to be placed.
Right, right, and it was just a question of this person changed their trash day, and the neighbor was assuming that they weren't going to be out too normally. They, it's, yeah, deal with that all the time. One-ten Diana, vehicle parking, primarily due to a shed demolition, so we'll give some time to get that, all the situation all resolved.
On Diana Drive, the house, we always have a problem with, they have a big dumpster out front.
Yeah, the one there towards the end of two twenty-four, that's one-ten Diana.
That's one-ten, okay.
Yeah, they're demolishing a shed in the back, there's a truck parked in the back there, I'm assuming, we'll be talking to the individual, give them a couple days to resolve that issue, but, yeah.
I mean, they have to see mattresses come out, and everything else going in the dumpster, so, just wondering.
Does the planning commission have a poll in the March, or a May, or a just a fourteen?
That was the worst meeting. There was not an official meeting, there was no action taken.
So, the two months in a row, we haven't had a long?
April, we didn't get a march.
Yeah, we tried to reschedule.
That's right.
Thank you.
That's accurate.
And that's all I have, I want to see anybody who has any questions.
Motion to accept the report that the Republican trainer...
Call in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're from there, I'll do the easy stuff, and we'll talk to them more. Mortgage violations, Bureau of Account hasn't been balanced, and then I passed around in everyone's box sheet about this thing from our tour room last night, two pages on projects they have, and then on the last page is a flyer they were handing about how walkable was your community. So we'll start with that one first, we talked about that a little bit before, about just, you know, the thing to make this community adhesive and grow together is how walkable is it now? I think we've got a lot of the sidewalk issues addressed, as far as having sidewalks, but there are sidewalks in the village especially, that need addressed, and it's him and I have talked about this, we've talked about some planning with Leah and Mark, so that, I feel, is our next step that we need to do, is to start addressing these sidewalks, that they're sending stuff to the homeowners, tell them what the ordinance says, they might have no idea what he even reads about, and, you know, monitoring that from there, so we'll take our, we'll take the lead on that in the village. But this is just a questionnaire they had asked people to look at, and, you know, it's turned to him, and this is what they're talking about. So last night, we had a meeting at Mike Thompson's house from Torrel, and myself, Linda, and Anthony were there. Did you have something to say?
No, nothing to say about that.
How did you guys get invited to it?
They just invited me, because I'm the mayor, and then Anthony has sort of been involved in Blumberg and stuff like that, and Linda's the president of council, I guess, is what I think.
I don't think they know anything about it.
Technically, they're a liaison, as they say.
He's the Torrel liaison from council, yes. But there was a plethora of people, Larry Bachman was there, Ted Idomin, Dave Smith, they had a pastor from Holy Family from the Presbyterian Church, Greg Riddler was there from the school board, Charles, Mike Thompson, John Scoffer, Bob Astriana, there was, I'd say twenty people over there. So it was sort of like an open roundtable discussion, mostly focused at me, Seaweed, but none of us. What Tor has done, and we had talked about this before, is they had passed this out, and we talked about this in council, they have a list of projects, and on the last page there was, I wrote it myself, number twenty, can't remember my writing age, Walgreens wall, on the Walgreens wall, they want to put something like, "Welcome to Pollen Village," or something like that, which would be pretty simple, I think. And then below that is amphitheater by Rotary Park, which I also wrote there, and that's something we had talked about before, with Bob Astriana, maybe designing something down by the creek, I don't know if on the Rotary Park side, which is where Green Meadow is, or on the Village side, maybe tearing an amphitheater to the hill, and people can sit on the opposite side and have concerts, music, whatever. But nonetheless, what they want to do, is they want us to come back to them in forty-five days, June fourteenth is the date, and address each one of these topics, and who would be responsible for it, what are our thoughts on it, et cetera, et cetera. So a lot of these things are easy, and some of them have a lot of tentacles to them, I guess, but the one thing that we had talked about was number, where is it, number nine, painting on the bridge, I know that's scheduled for the summertime, and Linda had mentioned, I believe, that you have a contact for that, because they wanted to know what color we were painting the bridge, and they had some opinions on that, so we're going to, you know, hook up with whoever's in charge of that, see if, I don't know what color they want, but, you know, that's something easy we can do.
So that's scheduled this summer?
Summer, yes. A lot of things, like the Yellow Creek Theater, I talked about that, and I just wanted to let them know that that was something that we are, and all of these, I said, we want to work with you and help if we can, but I wanted to let them know that we had nothing to do with the Yellow Creek Theater, not being in the Yellow Creek Theater anymore. Some people were surprised to hear that, maybe not, but told them about that, it fell apart. And the rest of it, we didn't go item by item down the list and say, well, let's do this, let's do that, let's do this, but these are things we talked about, we talked about the annexation, number nineteen, of Indian Trail residents to the village. Jay, a question that popped up, and you might know this, you might not, they said, one of the people there, I said, well, if we got these houses to come in, we can grow a tax base and everything else, and he said, if you give them a levy, all that does is reduce whatever pays into that levy. If you have fifty new houses come to the village, that doesn't mean we still pay the same per house, we would pay less if there was more money. I said, I don't know that, and I said, I don't find that at all. It didn't sound right to me.
It doesn't sound right to me.
It is true?
I think that's true.
Yes, that's more of a Nick question, to be honest with you. Yeah, I'll look into that.
Yeah, that doesn't sound right.
But the thing you have to remember is that, that if we get them in, then that means that there's going to be more services that we have to give, you know, more salt, more whatever we do now.
Leaves.
So we have leaves.
Some of the price.
Yeah, so it's all a house, the bell on top.
And that's what his thought was, he said, I mean, it sounds great, those are nice houses, but it's going to end up costing us more money in the long run, if that's the case. And it was nice that Larry came in and talked about what he did, because of talking about the historical district in downtown here, improving on that. Zoning was another issue, and I plugged him pretty well, that he's done a great job, I think he has, we still need some stuff to do with that. But a lot of these things are, for instance, number one, the sidewalk on Walgreens, El Berto, I mean, we can go Walgreens to Palmer's Bank, or whatever that bank is, but after that, that's the Portland Township, and I told them that, and they didn't seem, they said, don't tell me why, we can't do it, just let's do it, and I said, well, it's Portland Township, it's Portland Township, we can't spend money on that, but we can help them, and we could gladly support any efforts they do, and maybe do a joint grant. But overall, I think it was a good meeting, I know there's been some sort of jabs back and forth between some of the members and some of our people here, it was good to bring everyone together and get on the same page, and I think, overall, the tone was positive, you guys agree with that? I think so. So, we just have to, we'd have to look at this from our standpoint, and see what we can do, and maybe even committees, like, for instance, like, if you're looking at crosswalks, that would be street sidewalks drainage, or something Blumberg.
Can we go down the list and just hammer that out?
Do whatever you want.
Maybe one of us would have an answer.
Yeah.
I agree with Anthony.
Whenever you need this, pack a little new mail, or maybe later, or whatever you want to do, I just wanted to go over everything, and yes, no, what can we do, what can we not do? Does it fall in committee, what do they need to do, you know, kind of thing, so we're all clear?
Probably do it pretty quick.
Yeah, you're right.
And I think, and then Mark Thompson was there, too, and he sort of gave us a little plug, he said, you know, the government can't do everything, we have money restrictions, of course, and we need people from outside to help us, too, whether it be private donations, whether someone like Larry Bachman does all the historical research for us, and comes and says, hey, if you want to do this, this is how you do it, because we're not all experts in that stuff, and we can't do it all ourselves, so they're going to have to help us, too, that's sort of left it that way.
All right, I made one, a similar one to yours, I just put a little space, in case we wanted to jot something down, a little easier to do, we just hammered it out, if you can. Okay, I'll pass that out.
Thank you. Thank you, Anthony. When we hit El Berto, are we boardmen already there?
Oh, way before that.
Where it starts at Brunner's, where Brunner was.
So why would we be putting sidewalks in boardmen? I don't think we need to be allowed to do that, that wouldn't happen.
I don't think we can spend village dollars outside village limits.
Well, Mayor said we could install sidewalks, if we pursued it, and if it was worthy of a project from Walgreens to Palmer's Bank, so that's what we come back with.
On our end, on our end, yes.
Walgreens, and that's the...
All we could really do, in my opinion, is if boardmen choose to do that, which I don't know if they would, for Mary and the board, they might not, but what do they do? You know, if they want to do it, we could go in and write a letter of support, and say, yeah, we're on board, and we've talked with Jason Marie, or the finance guy, and we support this, and do whatever we can, you know.
I want to know from the auditors, the auditors, that we won't be cited for that.
We should get an opinion as to whether we're allowed to spend dollars outside village limits.
There's probably a long answer and a short answer, so, for our purposes, in twenty-one items, are we attacking short answers tonight? Because this was kind of on the band.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
This is a working session of council, that deserves a special meeting, and we're trying to fire it off. I mean, I agree with the approach, but if we want to get really in-depth, we need more time, so...
I think so, Jay, we can't spend money there, and, I mean, we could always write a letter, maybe from council, from the mayor, whatever, to boardman trustees, and say, hey, we've been wanting to help, or support, you know, verbal support and everything else, but they do have to do that, right?
Well, once I have a question, we'll chat into it.
And then another option on that one is, they've talked about the safe routes to schools, because I think there is a preschool or something at the Methodist Church, so maybe we could even tie it into that somehow, and get it paid for by grants.
Yeah, absolutely.
But again, that's still important to capture.
Yeah, all right. So then, I guess, the next one is, is the landscape forty foot, well, does that one say forty foot, or was it the one they gave us? Okay, so, forty foot was the initial thing, last night on the thing that we got, it said three hundred foot, so, that's kind of up in the air, and then, don't know on that one, but it opened the center lane, entering hole from six eighty bridge, includes signage, water, power, and straight trees.
So who would explore that, planning commission?
I don't know, I mean, who do you think?
Well, that is, it's weird, because half this poll, I'm coming in, going out as boardman. Yeah, so it's obviously a joint project, yeah.
And also, it's a, you know, ODOT highway.
Absolutely, so that's required talking to ODOT.
I think that they have to start with ODOT first, and see if, see if ODOT believe in saying okay.
Yeah, federal highway.
Right.
It's a US highway.
Oh, it's a US highway?
US highway, wow. Okay.
Well, that's one maybe an engineer could liaison with. Okay. That would be my guess, anybody else have any other input? That would be awesome.
You know, I forgot to even mention something we talked about for that, that we talked about grants, and they sort of accused us of not doing enough stuff, but we forgot to mention our, all our LED lights, and we're going to get, all our signals are going to be replaced for free, it's a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar project.
Did I hear that that's going to be a 2021? Do you guys recall that?
I think it was 2020 or 2021.
Okay. All right. So, all right, number three is, street trees planted along either side, 224, entering Paul from 680, the clock tower, North Main, Sheridan, Water, Holodeck Riverside, South Main, 224 from Riverside. It's my understanding that they've started to pursue funding for that, I think they received one grant, are ready to get that kind of rolling. That hold on, our, our, tree commissioner would help pick the great trees, so we avoid cutting down trees that we would do in the wires.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to put, plant any trees underneath the wires.
Yes.
That's true, 30 feet in two years.
Yeah.
Once we just cut down.
That would be crazy.
But again, it's very litigious, Riverside to Klingon, we basically stop at Marion Drive.
Yep.
So to Klingon is not our jurisdiction again.
So if I may, get a real adjective, permission for them to install trees on someone's property.
Has to go for...
Even though it's a double strip, but in the event that the tree has to be removed, it has to be paid for by the homeowner, which is the situation we're in now.
So you probably need like a, probably waiver, permission, or something.
You have to watch putting anything in the public right away.
Isn't that on a case-by-case basis with the tree commissioner and Tim and zoning?
That was location, isn't it?
I would be very uneasy putting anything in the right away, or us saying, yeah, go ahead and do it. Let me look into that a little bit more, but I'll tell you off the cuff, I'm kind of uneasy.
Our legislation that still hasn't passed.
Right now, it's not a village function, it's, street trees, it's written in the code, is approved by the street tree commissioner, so far has, you know, given the approval for putting a plant in or removing it. And the expense is not borne by the owner, but it's all expenses borne by the property owner.
Well, if somebody wanted to donate the tree to the property owner, and the property owner weren't planted, that's on them, but I don't know as a government that we could do it.
Again, that's not the cuff opinion, but, yeah, I'll look into it.
All right, then a couple times of this, or no, this, have crosswalks installed where appropriate. Is that on streets? I mean, the streets committee, they can go through with that?
I thought the air was working on this already.
No, it's working on it. Like, whose territory are you on? Are you on the state's territory, or are you on ours?
Well, I don't know, we're installing crosswalks away from, you know, traffic lights.
Yeah, see, I don't know yet.
Is that something?
I was going to say, I'm guessing that it's something that, well, it depends on where it is.
Yeah, exactly.
But it might be that, you know, we have to...
And I would think they're going to want them where they already are, maybe updated lakes, maybe even a brick thing across the street, you know, sort of have a, they'd always talk about Hudson, Sugar Falls, you know, that kind of like here.
So that's something different than putting in a new cross...
Yeah, maybe a new one, I would think it would be, as Sam said, by the library, and we'll probably look at that when they repay 170, the year to the amount, we can address that at that point.
And there are other things going on.
Yeah. Yeah. And I don't really know where else we could need a crosswalk.
Yeah, exactly.
That's something there, right? We can maybe, give more verification.
Again, could we appoint Martha to liaison that topic?
Sure.
All right, number five is, have road curving, patch basins repaired along 224, add curving and define driveway entrances from Water Street to 200.
The, from what I understand on that, isn't that the Hall of Earth to do a little bit of that, or about curving or sidewalks? Side curving, I would say, now.
So if you do curving, you have to do patch basins, right?
Yeah, if you do curving, I'll talk to Shova with Russ, if we do curving on 170, when we resurface that, then we have to do sanitary, not sanitary, we have to do storm sewers, because then the water is going to run down the curve, it has to go somewhere. So we're not talking about just resurfacing, you know, we're talking about a multimillion dollar job probably.
So that would be probably streets again, then, right?
Yeah, streets are ODOT.
Okay.
Why do they want to define the driveway entrances?
We didn't go through these, item by item.
I'm guessing they want, you know, curved.
Maybe come down to the driveway.
Yeah, something like that. I'm just guessing. But again, boy, when you're talking about putting in that length of curbing and that kind of drainage system to tie it into a storm sewer system, you are talking...
Lot different than our paid program.
Hundreds of thousands, hundreds upon hundreds of thousands of dollars. It's a major undertaking, it is not a minor undertaking.
All right, the next one's about a project for 170, so there's Nesbit, and they would like to be involved in planning to ensure curving driveway entrances and double strips of the farm.
Would also go to streets? I mean, in ODOT?
In ODOT?
I mean, how much room do they have to stay in?
Wait, who is it that wants to be involved in this?
Torrell. See, that's sort of vague again, what do they want to do?
This is an ODOT, we don't have anything to do with this job at all. They show up, they resurface our roads.
They tell us when they're going to do it.
And they have.
Okay. Didn't we, last time though, Russ, when we did that, we tried to sort of talk with them about striping at least? Because over by Walgreens, it seemed like they made that one lane really big going to Struthers, the other lane...
We did talk to them a lot. And they did what they wanted.
Yeah. Because that sort of created a more congestion than it needed to be, and if they would have made the other lane wider, people could have turned right going to boardman.
Yeah.
And I think what they're looking for by this laundry list is, you know, a 10 to 20-year strategic plan. And it's admirable. Yeah, it's very admirable, and I think you can answer as we are, answer as we go, and you have to start it somewhere, so I applaud everybody on working together, and short answers aren't always pretty, but they're serviceable, so.
Absolutely, it's a start. All right, next one is, working with businesses, residents, apartments on 224, here in North Main, South Main, for physical improvements. I mean, is that zoning?
Home review?
Yeah.
What zoning, what I would do is, if there is something in, on the properties that is in violation of code, I should have noticed, talk to the homeowners about the homeowners' repairing. Again, the only times we would step in as a village and finance such improvements could be in the case of a safety hazard, or something where we needed to take action to, in, in a certain for public safety.
And the only time that you step in otherwise is if there's a violation of our ordinances, but we can't really tell people that we don't like how it looks necessarily.
Right.
Unless it's a violation.
Yeah, there has to be a clear violation. And like I was approached once by a member of Torrel on a specific location, complaining about the location, and I looked at that and did not see any clear violations, there was some borderline stuff, and the person says, well, don't contact the property owner, because they're not going to do anything about it. I know that their brother or sister will, if you contact them, that's not the way, you know, I don't have any authority to contact the non-property owners about rectifying the situation, you know? My course of action is clearly laid out on what I'm wanting to do, so, you know, I followed the code, you know, and there's a process involved. And Jay and I are working on administrative penalties, which will greatly help me do my job right now, because, you know, a lot of people, when you present that, you know, let's get this, you know, it'll give you a little teeth to back that up with, so far as, you know, hey, we have to rectify this problem. You know, I work with the program, they, you know, how long is it going to take to fix it, if they want to give them a little longer? And, you know, once we get the administrative penalty things in place, then if it doesn't happen, I have another tool to use, other than just trying to cite them into court where, you know, things to go wrong where, you know? But if we have administrative penalties, you know, a first-time offense might be a hundred bucks, you know, it's payable as soon as I issue another citation, so that will greatly help, you know, to quicken the process, so to speak, when you have, you know, a money monetary penalty, a lot of people move a little bit quicker, but there has to be a clear defined violation of, of the, along with me to take steps.
Sounds good, thank you. All right, and then, are the timing of streetlights on the books?
I don't know. Sure what he means.
I don't know what he means either. Yeah.
Streetlights or traffic lights?
It says streetlights. So they read traffic light.
Really? That's, that was what I thought when I first read it, but I don't know what I was thinking.
Two.
Yeah.
Do you hear that one?
Are the timing of the streetlights on the books? I don't know, I'm sure what he means.
I don't definitely mean...
Traffic lights, yeah, same with like traffic lights.
I want to explain this. There's always so much you can do with traffic light timing, especially in the center of town. Now, the outer lights, there's things we can do, and I think that's probably what they're referring to, 170 in Nesbit, 170 in North Lima, maybe 170 in Johnson. There's always so much you can do at the center. That's the only place in Mahone County where three make the highways come together, so...
Are they looking to have them turn blinking at some time? Is that what they want, or they don't think that they...
I don't know.
Do we have any idea what this means?
I mean, I could...
If, you're more than one, if you want to refer them to me on some of that stuff, maybe I can at least explain it, or, I mean, if there's something to help with, I will.
Is the center of town, the timing is outside by like ODOT?
No.
We set that?
It said so it works.
Okay. We, you do.
Yeah, you have to, well, actually, the people that program the intersections do, like, through Pathmasters, but they have to be set a certain way, because of the way the intersection is laid out. And there's not a whole lot you can do, and there's already sensors at those intersections that if there's nobody at, if there's nobody at 170, that it doesn't change on 170 either side. But on the other hand, you still have to keep it in time, because if there's someone trying to get off 616, it still has to function with the center of town. I mean, there, it, it is, I complain all the time, that's my biggest concern, is those traffic signals. Those traffic signals get screwed up, or we have a problem, we are sunk. That's why I was happy to hear about that grant, so I'm sure there's something we can do to help them.
And that will give us more flexibility with the new laces, than when we put in, we can get hard swarmed, and we can...
Yeah, yeah, then we can figure out systems. What, what do we think, 30 years old, 25, 30 years old? 25 years old? Which, you know, 25 years old in, in the computer ages, it became by hard swarm.
Russ, when they redo all the lights to the Village, does that include the crosswalks? Writing?
Yeah, everything. That, that, that project was, what did Gary say, 1.1 million? I'm sure that's going to go up.
Because our match issue is like 200 grand or something.
And it's funded 100%.
Yep.
Just can't beat that.
That's pretty awesome.
Great. Safety issue too.
Absolutely. All right, I think, Russ.
Okay, so...
Yeah, I mean, Linda, if you had, she said, if you had a contact, something...
I'm going to contact, and I actually spoke, I spoke to them when they were doing the bridge, and said, we'd like to have you also do the painting, because that's a tough place for our guys to be over there working like that. And they said they would do it. We didn't have, we didn't have a choice on the color, the colors, you know? That's what they did, and it's all pretty standard, I guess.
Maybe throw some tin in it, whatever. I don't know.
Perfect, okay. All right, and it says, work with Paul Library to bring back Yellow Creek Theater, maybe paint the memorial. Again, not to be too, more library, I'm guessing?
Why did the library get involved in this? Because it's all to the past.
It ultimately comes down to zoning. If you want to rebuild the building, you come get a zoning permit, submit plans, do the, I mean, that's a zoning issue to, from that standpoint. As far as re, maintain, re-mortem stairwell, I guess the question there is the right of way, is that on us, is that ODOT, is it county, who's responsible for that scale?
Past, we've said it's ODOT.
I would think the bulk of it is ODOT, only there's one small section at the landing that I think sits on private property, or the library property.
Could we do, get the easement or something?
We just have to find who's responsible for it, first of all.
The bulk, it's ODOT.
Awesome. All right.
Like a Boy Scout.
Yeah, I think it was a private...
Boy Scout project, exactly.
244 Alberti.
Alberti, right?
Yep.
Awesome. All right, continued improvements to the tall interior exterior.
Affording. Exactly.
Yeah, yeah, we're getting it.
The one thing they did talk about, I think it was a simple fix, is they want a railing on the steps on the front porch, which is this porch right here.
And that's what your list for this year is.
Well, I contacted the gentleman, and he had an estimate coming to us, but in the meantime, had to do a safety job after one of those, I'm sorry to say, one of the school shootings, and then he got busy, unfortunately. So that's pending, but I've got that, I'm on that, I'll get back to him.
Awesome. The Lions, the Paul Lions, well, actually, we talked to them last night after the tour, and said that they would be willing to possibly fund that, as a project or something.
Lions?
Yeah.
It was there for them. Do you know, I was questioning this one.
Yeah, yeah, so she said that they were, they're looking for a project doing that, maybe something, involved in that, so. Spot liquor licensing for upscale restaurants. Do we have anything?
Well, Sam, I mean, that's a question, or Jay, or you, can you get a spot liquor license first of all?
It's a ballot issue, though.
So it's on the ballot, and then, I mean, I assume anyone's going to come in here and do a restaurant, it's going to come to claim you.
We're not going to have so many, a lot.
How many, how many think we can get in downtown?
We have, we only have three precincts.
It's a percentage, is it based on population?
There's a formula, the liquor control.
Yes, maybe say this is Paul Village 1, for instance, we think two, three of them even available?
I think two, three max. Yeah, exactly where it is, like, I don't think it'd be very difficult to get one at the Village, at the, because the church might say, no way, and they cannot say it, it's cool, because remember, they all have, you know, they have their way, they have stuff. So, I mean, doable.
State liquor control.
You know, you really don't want to have so many.
Yeah, and I mean, that...
And it all depends on the developer, the idea and the plan.
And that's basically a ballot issue and a planning issue, so most of the restaurants. It's a campaign, really, don't you want to more talk to people, see if they'll... So we really don't have control of it, huh?
Yeah.
That all. No, every two years, once up for renewal, something will come to council, and the last give will object for any reason. Uh, that's basically our law.
Awesome, so that's more on the floor of how to do groundwork, I guess.
As a developer.
Or the developer. So, and we can't contact developers right now, so.
My job.
Most out of our control, so. Okay. Um, it says there are approximately 35 residence businesses in high traffic areas in the village that are under check. Uh, and then, if you number versus trend, are we currently sending letters? So, another one for you, similar to 437.
Yep, uh, if they can gladly, any complaints, or if they want forward that list to me, and book on it, there has to be a clear and definite violation code, not just a, you know, we don't like the looks of this property, or we don't like them, there has to be a clear and definite violation. Once there is, I talk with the property owner, I generally do not send letters, I have violation notices. I mean, I normally knock on the door, talk to the property owners, work with them, establish a timeline for correcting those violations, um, which, uh, can be anywhere from three days on minor violations up to, you know, six months to a year for major exterior renovations. You know, all depends on the work involvement, uh, you know, whether they agree, contract, it's all that kind of thing. But, uh, it's all handled on a case by case basis, if there's, they want to hold that list to me up, you know, that happens, whatever, it's in the law. I see what, maybe anything, but I can't do much.
Awesome. Thank you. Okay, uh, it says the fourth ward needs to create a master plan for flooding the road to clubs and forums.
We're working on it.
Fourth ward, okay?
You can follow us.
We're working on it.
That's always an easy one to tell.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, and then, uh, we need to be ready to help Paul and school sell their properties for a win-win. We've already discussed that zoning plan, Paul and Board of Education, Paul and Board of Education.
Again, they gotta, they gotta bring it to us, make the first step. We can't pre or disapprove of what we don't even know is going on.
Awesome. And then, uh, it says there are two block projects that we should be working on, uh, the Paul and Spring that I've brought up in the past, and then McKinley, Labyrinth, and Village, I think they want to do some kind of a memorial for William McKinley over there, or something like that. I guess is how it was explained to me.
Village, what do you mean by church?
Yeah, yeah. Um, the one thing that I have on the Paul and Spring, I know that it's currently on Vince Rashidi's property, and I know he's, I guess, talked to certain people saying he'd be willing to let us take easement on that, or do something with that. I mean, that's about as far as we can go with that. I mean, it's probably not gonna get renovated and redone and made a public space while it's still on someone's private property, or.
Most likely.
Yeah.
But I know, I've talked to him, he's in support of that, Dave Smith is involved, so, I mean, those are some good people, get stuff done.
Absolutely. So where do we go with that? Is that zoning or is it?
Stuffing their variances or whatever, pretend enough we would, what do you think, Tim?
Um.
Private property.
Private property.
Yeah.
Yep.
It's not, it's not really a variance that you need, it's, we don't control the property, it's owned by someone else who is a private individual.
How about jurisdiction on the village green, say, matter on?
The Hyde Fund, obviously, that's a property.
Yeah, the Green is.
I mean, that, the Hyde Fund, that, the Hyde Fund zone is its own entity, entity, but it's still answer to you guys. I mean, it's been discussed.
If you don't mind, I am on the Hyde Fund, and basically, we've been approached about elaborate on the property. And respectfully, we've been looking at it, and Hyman has drawn up plans and measured everything out. It's supposed to be a pathway with the history of President McKinley. Um, the question always arises as to the original intent of the green. Um, and we've had everything from suggestions to put a fountain in the middle of the green, and now elaborate, et cetera. Um, I think I can speak for the committee right now, is that we will look at all options, but the original intent of the ordinance, and how it was written, and why the property was originally donated, which was donated to the village, our committee basically does the nitty gritty, but then everything has to come back to you guys. Uh, but at this point in time, we've seen the plans. Quite honestly, I don't think they're gonna go very much further as far as setting up a labyrinth. We have enough problem with the trees, cemetery repairs, and everything else, without turning it into, pardon the expression, expression, but an amusement park type setting. It's not a playground, it's a public sanctuary in a sense.
Beautiful.
Thank you.
It's a green.
Yep.
It's a green.
Thank you. Alright, um, and it says, just another one kind of interesting, is how do we track business? We've talked about that, so. Um, annexation of Indian Trail, we've already brought that up.
Were you in touch with that?
We just don't, income. Should we be sending a, invite the president?
They already, they were proposed as a company.
Here's a graph.
Yeah, I heard that, but you don't, you're the guy, right?
They have to move. They have to move. They have to get an attorney and move forward.
Uh, by initiative petition, okay, got it, thanks.
The only thing I'm asking about is the thing, uh, amount we receive from our thing, uh, levels. Am I right?
Yes.
And if that will.
Yes. If their property, Jackson, wherever, will help us, or we stay the same.
That will lower our money.
Yeah, exactly.
If we bring that one, will it lower?
Or we'll bring more money in, because there is 50, 60, 70.
Okay.
So we need to have that.
Yep. Awesome. Alright, and then, have a welcome sign put in on the brick wall of Walgreens. Um, I talked to them a little bit about this, they basically, all they want from us is maybe a letter from the mayor, or from council to Walgreens, saying, hey, it's something that a nonprofit group is pursuing, just to show that our support for it, I guess, and that they would be willing to fund it, and the fundraise board, and stuff like that. Um, but just some outreach from us to Walgreens, to try to find a way to make them let us put some. I'll do that. Okay, cool.
If they're gonna say, welcome to Village of Paul, and Paul and Village, or Paul and Ohio.
Exactly.
Whatever they want.
Exactly.
Yeah, see what they want, I don't care.
I mean, I'm assuming that what will happen is, we're in support of a project, and they're gonna be the ones who would do design review, but they'd have to pass it by us before anything would go up. And they would process. The process would work, I'm assuming, but they would sort of solicit designs from area mural creators, or the Torah world, and bring them to us then, to authorize a final determination of which one we wanna go ahead and add.
Is that the kind of sign you're looking for, with a mural?
I mean.
I thought it was letters, like. Yeah, I thought like, maybe like a stainless steel letter on the wall, so.
Certainly, you've seen the one, the way I was describing it is, you know, the one, I don't think there's been downtown on Fifth Avenue, the one they just put into the sports complex, the Caveli Sports Complex or whatever, as you're going down towards the stadium, it's like uplit, and it has, uh, I guess metallic letters across it. It looks nice, lit up at night and stuff like that, but I think that's what they're trying to do.
What kind of scale are we talking?
It's like.
I mean, it's like the Caveli Center is really big, and Walgreens is really small.
About 500 feet.
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
I'm sure we could get into the nitty gritty, but we're on number four of our council agenda. Okay, good skip along.
And we're talking about crosswalks.
For the sake of.
And, and that's about it, so I, I think that we've covered everything, and then, I know you're mentioning it too, is they, they requested a written report from us on all of this by June 16th.
Tomorrow, apparently.
Yeah.
Is it like, is this, is this just officially numbers thrown out, or just a week list, a prioritized list?
It's been very confusing.
Well, is this, is this a brainstorm that boom, boom, boom?
Yeah, these are things we should do, so that's how I think.
How happens, yeah.
I think we could prioritize this a little.
We can easily find some things we could do quickly.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Yeah.
Are we, are they, just to define the scope of our answers, are they looking for answers, or are they looking for action?
Yeah, well, basically, the way I understand it, what they were first be with was, they want it done.
Yeah, I don't think they want to hear, no, we can't do this.
At the time, they're like, oh, which is less, we have to do, we have to get this done, and it's on you to do it, you know, do it yourself.
The idea of, um, the sidewalk, that I like, you know, more sidewalk, the idea of the side office you talked about a couple months ago, after we made even more deals. Could we do a jet with boardman on the sidewalk?
I don't know. I could talk to Jason about it.
Does something maybe.
But I think they're, our best of us can be safe around some schools, and I think they're.
I see, I think that's obvious.
They're looking at 2019, 2020 funding even, they're two, three years out, because it's already down to the sludge.
So we think like the sidewalks, just looking at it from a common sense, sidewalks and the oval, wherever it was. Landscape 40 foot long, or 300 foot long, and the sidewalks over by 68, maybe we could do that jointly? If we're lucky enough to make, I know it's a lot of moving parts there, with ODOT and all that.
The problem with sidewalks, when we did ours by a post office and stuff, I mean, that was a big project, we had to buy a right of way, and it was like, that's expensive project.
And I, I really, we really want a divided, um, highway, do we wanna put it?
See, another question.
Do we need that median strip?
It's crazy.
I question why it is that we make the assumption that they say, here's how high you have to jump. I don't even know that we want that in the.
Well, I think we, the operative, if we, it looked good, I mean, we hope it becomes, say, or somebody else, for the time.
No idea of whether the rest of the community wants a divided highway.
Right.
Maybe we put out, you know, and we say, it's gonna cost this much money, and it means that it's, we're gonna be spending all of our goodwill and all of our time and treasure trying to get this divided highway into Paul.
I think more of a aesthetically, and, you know, welcome to Paul, you know, that.
That's some people's aesthetic, but it's not everybody's aesthetic.
And I was wondering about that.
We don't have any idea how many people's aesthetic this really is.
Yeah.
It's 12 people who invited the mayor, and Linda, and Anthony to a meeting.
It's a pretty esteemed group, I do have to say.
Yeah.
Knowing the folks who have gathered this information, or trying to track some thoughts. I mean, to us as a group, I don't think they're new thoughts, you know, I think these balls have been kicked around for a little while, and I'm, again, a very new person, but thanks to Anthony and Sam, and to you, I'm not as new now. But we're all kind of in this together, and it is a good group of people, I don't think you're going to have a yes on every single one. You're not gonna have a no on every single one.
They're saying that we're lazy, we're not forward thinking, we don't do anything.
But you've been talking about our group against one, that's what I've gotten back. And it's been frustrating, but, um, coming from that, I thought maybe something, maybe we could do like a half sheet postpart, you know? Because, once again, these are ideas from 10, 12 members of the community, that's great, right? But why don't we do something like send out a photo, say, hey, does anyone else have any ideas?
We're going to do a survey, we can, so, there are like pages, there's an online survey, please complete. What do you like, what kind of projects would you be interested in either, or someone?
Yeah, and if someone has a great idea, other than me, you know.
Well, that'd be something we're not even know. I mean, looking at this list, we could, the paint on the bridge, that's something we could do tomorrow. And we can look about the right of way or even more, we'll think, work with this Yelker Theater if it does it. Um, putting the railing on the steps, we're gonna build tall, have a welcome sign in Paul and everything, there's, that's 20% of their list right there.
Yeah.
They're easy.
Right, right.
The survey's a good idea, because then at least we're asking the folks from the village what they want.
Yeah.
Because as I looked down the list of who's on this thing, there's a lot of folks who don't live in the village. Who are asking us here to spend our money.
Yeah.
So I think we have to get what the citizens want, and then we go from there.
Who is on the list, you know, we're sitting here like, damn, Katie Waters, who's on this list of members?
Uh, Charles Roenberg is the president, who lives in the township, right, right by the edge. Basically, the village, he's been in the village his whole life. Uh, Phil is Rashidi.
Tattle Shute. So far, two people who do not live in the village.
He usually lives in the village, the township. Uh, Larry Warren, who's always been a long time streetscape guy, but he's in the township, resident. Uh, John Yerian is in the village. Um, Judy Young, I'm not sure where she lives.
Warden, that's it.
Warden, yeah.
Okay. Uh, the ministers from Holy Family and Presbyterian Church, I'm not sure where they are.
Presbyterian's in the village, but Holy Family's in there.
Yeah, but I don't know where they live, maybe they live near the township.
Oh, the Presbyterian minister lives in the township.
Oh, does, okay.
But the church is in the.
John Stofford is township, has village priority. Uh, Ted Hyman's village, Dave Smith's village, Larry Baughman was Larry's township. Uh, Matt Maschiano's village, Mike Thompson's village, Mark Thompson's village. I'm trying to think who else is there.
The majority were village, I think.
Yeah.
Pretty much.
40, 60, maybe.
I would have to say thank you for attending, and thank you for letting us know that this is stirring out there, and thank you for your legwork and what you're willing to do on it. I just think we just keep pushing it forward as much as we can, and help to work, you know, hand in hand with any groups that want to improve the village.
And I kind of want to just say one final thing on this, is, you know, I've been kind of a bit uneasy, just on how I'm going on with this group, and with some members of it, so far, and I, I don't partly want to continue doing the liaison work, so if anyone else here would like to, that'd be great, but I've been, I've been talked to in some not great ways, and I don't appreciate that. I know the mayor doesn't either, and, and I'd like to pass that buck, and if anyone else would like to do it, because, I mean, I'm glad we did this, and this is awesome, and we got to discuss all this stuff, and, uh, but going forward, you know.
Mark my objects, hold on.
Yeah.
Thank you for your participation.
We don't need to figure that out.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that was my mayor's.
Make a motion to accept the manager's report, second.
Call a favor.
Aye.
Any votes? Tim's gone, thank you for that. Um, yeah, port from fiscal officer.
Yeah. Okay, I'm gonna circulate around the list of bills to be paid for your signature. Um, I also handed out tonight a schedule of payroll, because I know for like some of the new folks, um, we sitting here get paid once a month, it's the second pay of the month. Sometimes there are three pays in a month, so your little handy dandy cheat sheet will help you along. And, um, the last thing is the website, I am meeting with IDMI on Thursday the 3rd. Um, I am trying to work something up with them, so that, I don't know if you're familiar, but on the, on the one site that has all the things down the right-hand side, you know, agendas, minutes, fiscal reports, um, that's getting very long, because we have to enter, um, each of these things in minutes several times. So what I've done is I've set up a schedule that I'm going to try to meet with them, so this form will be on the website, and this will be a lot easier here to get things uploaded also. Um, also, when I upload files, somehow you're only able to upload a file at a time, and that's a little time consuming, but I'm gonna speak with them also on Thursday about that, if there's a way to just upload all seven for here this evening. And basically, that's it, and we report.
Make a motion to accept the fiscal officer's report, second.
Call a favor.
Aye.
Any votes? I'm just zoning this year already, and report from solicitor.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Carol Hill, comparison embarrassed. Tim Clavon already mentioned Riverside, certainly I will follow up with final letter in an effort to work with the landowner to take the steps necessary to get that damaged hole replaced. Secondly, just again to reiterate, on the mayor's court, as we talked about in the caucus, I'm waiting for that copy request from the National Archives. Uh, I'm also going to coordinate with Nick to sit down and review our public records policy, and start plugging in some updates, I guess we'll call them. We'll coordinate a date for you and I to meet, and, and start going over that. Last week, I think, early in the week, there was an email exchange with the mayor, I, and I know Mark was involved, and I ended up copying Gary D'Orio at one point about what we'll call the Alvern question, uh, that, that turnaround in between Alvern and Johnson Place. I know it was a topic that came up with the last council, late last year. Uh, it certainly popped up again, uh, when, when there was a question of who's responsible to do some repair work, uh, I think on some ruts or a pothole or something that had, had developed in that turnaround. Uh, it, it turns out that Gary and our engineering firm are pretty well equipped to answer that question for us, so we are waiting on that, and then there will be a full report to council when we find out exactly, when we determine whether or not that little turnaround area was ever a dedicated street, and ultimately, who's responsible for it, uh, whether it is the village, or whether it falls to the adjacent property owners. I will, I added to my to-do list to look into the question of certification for local government status, I'll own in that mayor, and find out exactly what we need to do, and, and if that's something the village is desirous of pursuing. And as we were going through the Torah list, something occurred to me when the question of Paul and Springs came up. I, I remember in dealing with Mill Creek, that there were a couple of occasions where a conservation easement was granted to Mill Creek, and I, I think that that more, that has more to do with maintaining private land in a natural state, but I am pretty certain that Ohio has something to the effect of a historic preservation easement. Uh, and that is an agreement usually between a government entity and a private landowner, and it could be that that Paul and Spring area, being on private property, uh, we could perhaps enter into a historic preservation easement, if possible. Uh, and, and that may go a long way towards, uh, bringing that back and making it accessible, uh, if it does in fact lie on property, as it certainly seems to do. With all of that in mind, um, end of report.
Make a motion to accept the solicitor's report, second.
Call a favor.
Aye.
Any votes? You gotta pull it easy, because the door is still gonna be hot.
Paul and.
Yeah, it's not.
Nice.
Uh, report from chief of police and street commissioner.
Both departments, right.
Make a motion to accept the police and streets report, second.
Call a favor.
Aye.
Any votes? Uh, report from engineer.
Uh, I'm just gonna reiterate what Jay talked about, we contacted MS Consultants and asked them to provide us with information on Alvern, um, to determine whether any portion of it is a dedicated street. And so we are awaiting information from them. We requested this last week, so I'm assuming they'll get back to us in the next week or so.
Make a motion to accept. Make a motion to accept the verbal report, second.
Call a favor.
Aye.
Any votes? Reports from outstanding committees of council, finance, wage, audit, and insurance.
We're really pretty much wrapped up on the budget for this year unless some major things ensue. Um, we have any work that, uh, when they're coming for audit this year?
Okay. At the schools.
That'll be the other big thing this year, and council members are allowed to attend those meetings that we have.
Excellent.
Yeah, so we'll keep posting.
Make a motion to accept the report, second.
Call a favor.
Aye.
Any votes? Legislation and policy committee.
There was a question about group homes and issues related to group homes we were going to meet on, just as a discussion this past month due to a conflict that I had. I didn't allow enough time for that committee meeting, and I apologize to my committee members, Martha and Sam. Um, if we could reschedule that, is it still, I believe it's still warranted at this point?
Yeah.
You would still like to meet to talk?
Whatever you want to.
Yeah.
Whatever. We can schedule it.
All right.
Just give Nick what three days notice, three days notice.
You wanna do that now? We put something together on the tenth at seven. Do you wanna go an hour before? Tenth at six, tenth at six.
Six o'clock.
Yep. So, Mr. Sernick, we'll meet May tenth at 6:00 PM Village Hall.
This is for legislation.
For legislation. Thank you. That's all I have right now.
Make a motion to accept the report.
Second.
Call a favor.
Aye.
Any votes? Police committee.
Um, we, we met tonight, just went over Russell's report, which if everyone's read it, I am gonna make a motion tonight to hire a new part-time police officer and also a reserve police officer. We've got an appropriate time. We have ordered our new, um, 2018 Ford Taurus, delivery day will be about in July, and our officers will be at the schools till the end of the year.
So you swear those guys are next meeting, is that what you want?
Yeah, yeah, I'll make a motion tonight to hire a new.
Make a motion to accept.
Second.
Call a favor.
Aye.
Any votes? Uh, street sidewalks and drainage committee. Uh, we meet before the next council meeting, so nothing is going on other than what's in Russell's. Looper, anybody want a looper?
I believe Mr. Latanzia did the bulk of the legwork on this one, nothing to slight you on, Mr. Moffey, but if you wanna go ahead and talk about what you were talking about, like some fixtures.
Yeah, so we're gonna start getting the ball on in some of the town mall improvements that we listed before the finalization of the budget, and I'm gonna try to get a time in the next week or so with Chief Baby, we've got the lows, and see what light fixtures we can match and stuff like that, a little bit nicer upstairs, what we were talking about, and also call people for the carpets, get put on the carpets, clean the carpets, new runners, things like that. Uh, so we're getting going with that, and, uh...
Thank you for getting that straight back up, because that was a problem for a while.
Yeah.
She was getting on sunny days, she can't.
Is it hitting the computer? What, is this doors open there?
Yeah, she has very sensitive eyes.
So anyway, it's, thank you, thank you.
Motion to accept the Looper report, second.
Call a favor.
Aye.
Any votes? Reports from boards, planning commission.
There's nothing right now, we'll try again, to meet again this month.
Forest zoning appeals. Nothing on there, really. There's one. Architecture review board.
We're set to meet May seventh, nothing else going on.
Forest board.
Uh, I put a new item for everybody in the room, um, the board was plus item that's on the agenda. I don't know, would you like to add to the board?
I have nothing to add, but if you have any questions, I can certainly answer.
How successful was our foundation, on Sunday the 29th?
On Sunday the 29th, the forest board, uh, foundation board did host an information reception at the pavilion, the Zetecar Pavilion, and they did have traffic, probably eight dogs on leashes, as well as many interested parties. The trolley from Metro Parks came through for two runs. Anyone who stopped to say hello, we, we had a grill master working at the wonderful new grill fireplace, and that was Dave Watts from the foundation. And it was just a lovely occasion. The refreshments were there to be enjoyed, people made donations, um, and very nice donations, and then there were bluebells starts for sale, beautifully wrapped, labeled, and so forth. The first person who came up, I was standing there, and the man said, "This is illegal." And I said, "Don't worry, these are not from this forest, these Virginia bluebells are imported." And, uh, but I thought it was a keen observation, somebody who understood the forest, no, you don't remove plants from the forest. So it was a great friend raiser and information. So our appreciation to the Forest Foundation Board and to those who attended to support it. And we did make one mistake, which I didn't know until I sat in someone's office today. We should have said to you, if you didn't know what was going on, although I think that the, it was out there in some form, but it was the foundation's event, I'm not passing the buck, I'll take part of the blame for this because it's about the forest. So I think they'll do this again sometime, I hope, you will all, pardon me, know about it, and I hope that you will come by with your dogs or without. So either way, but it was a great day, as cold as it was, it was really fun. So, thank you.
Thank you. I thought it had that forest taste to it.
It was wonderful. I ate a real char roiled one at the end, and it was still good.
Yeah. Okay, I wanna add two things to the report that were on the agenda, that I just came up at the forest board meeting, the last one. Number one, after, you know, we all have that phase two work going on at College Street, and we know Bova's gonna be done with that pretty soon. Um, I, we, we at the forest board, we talked, we got to talk to Calm for him, get approval to put a temporary gate up there when they're done, and then that's up just last until the forest board and the foundation come up with a more permanent gate, and that we're working on those prices and designs right now, so I need to have Calm, we can get to that point in the meeting, to put up a temporary gate, and I've talked to Russ about it, he's aware of it, and tonight make a motion and do that, and, you know, Russ can take care of it. The second thing, even more of an emergency, if you've been back, if any of you've toured back the Butler Trail lately, um, you look, where Bova's been doing their thing with their giant earth movers, like the Terminator, and things of that nature. If you go down towards the, if you go down towards that, how they development, that's down the culvert, that's right there, it's just in really terrible condition. I need to think an emergency vehicle could get through there if, God forbid, something happened down there. And, uh, we need to, the forest board and the foundation, we are looking at quotes right now to fix things, we were hoping we might be able to massage Bova, and my best Mark and I, they get them, "Hey, why are your equipments here, can you?" And they weren't really too happy about doing that, uh, so we're trying to get some estimates, we are getting some estimates to work on one, I was out there Sunday morning with somebody. Meanwhile, Russ has been kind enough to patch it, as it's been patched together before, but it's not gonna, we have to replace it, repair it. When the water comes down from 680, it is coming up, over, and down, you can see the, what we've passed, what we've done has been deposited into the creek, it's terrible. The garden is coming down, they got a tree that'll up against the, it's pretty bad, it's in really bad condition, it can't be patched against. So what, what we done, Russ has already patched it, and I think he says it done the best that he could, I don't know.
Right.
The street, uh, will be finished today without their patching it to the best that they can, so they're gonna continue to do that until the foundation, we and the forest board do something in a more permanent.
Which culvert is this?
It's on McKinley, it's on the, well, the culvert, that's the double culvert that's got all the debris, 'cause it comes around a dog leg from 680, it's on McKinley.
Yeah, I ordered you to get out there, take a walk, take a look at it, I know Russ has patched it to the best of his ability, I think that's the second time in less than eighteen months that they've done that. Your eye, you know, I'm not real good at this stuff, but your eye just look at, you can see erosion, you can see, if you look down, you can see the tree trunks that are up against it, there's dust inside, um, you know, the, the concrete, I think the thirty-six inch pipe, and, and the gardeners are just coming down from 680, that, like the garlic mustard, Paul, that's the queen, and a lot of the kids from Poland High School picked up a lot of that garden that just come, throwing down, the water just not, comes down and goes over, and it's bad. On top of that, I don't think, I don't think an emergency vehicle can get over that, if anything happened in that house or something. So that was taken care of, but one thing I will ask for tonight is for Calm to go okay, and to put a couple of design, once Bova is done, they need.
And we use, last year was our first donation, we're supposed to get thirty-plus years from the public services, we got $5,000 last year from the woods, so we could use that, I don't know actually the cost, but that, we have some.
For the, um...
For the, the culvert thing or the repair.
Okay, well, I'm, um, we're gonna, or, I wasn't at the foundation to find out.
Well, it's, it's, it's one of the things that's on our, our list of possible projects for the foundation at the foundation's request, but there was also, um, he's not an engineer, but a contractor besides Bova, who was in the forest at the reception Sunday, and Mark was taking road trips back to it with various people who could look at it and determine possible solutions. And I think my son took a group back too, because collectively they're putting their minds together, understanding the water flow and what it will take to deter this. If you had an emergency vehicle try to execute that pathway today, they would actually drop part of their axle down one side or the other to get across for an emergency, and of course we know the first responders are definitely fearless, I'm sure they would do whatever it takes appropriately, but it shouldn't have to be that difficult, so it needs addressed.
So the foundation does, and we have a path, I mean.
Right, that'd be, I'd be left with the, um, definitely.
Maybe you don't touch on that.
I won't talk about it, nothing, that's...
It's not in paperwork, they can't, but now we have.
Is this associated with the actual path they're putting in, or is this something?
No, it's in front of the path, it's the culvert, it's, if you go to spot, I don't think it'll go up there, it'll down.
So it's not the path?
No, it's a trail, it's a vehicle trail. When you see the signed trail, that's meant for emergency vehicles, well, people love it, but it's really to allow access.
Well, the reason I bring that up is that, back to the original agreement between the village and county and the, and easement and the crushed stone path, it, it very clearly said that it shall be continuously maintained by the county. Um, so, you know, it may be a call to Patchanetti to say, "Hey."
I think definitely.
Yeah.
Good fight, good catch, Jack.
Yeah, this is our ordinance, and there's a corresponding resolution by the commissioners, so.
May, may I make just a remark that I hope is appropriate to this, if not, I ask your forgiveness, but, um, the Butler Trail is where the heavy ruts are from all of that huge equipment, and that has, that's the one that immediately when we turn off to the right, that is that major trail for vehicles or foot traffic, and that has huge ruts in it, that's what I believe they have declared that they would slag and maintain, because their machinery is moving on it. They do go right onto a McKinley and then over, but, um, it's, it's that area. The problem that Councilman Moffey has brought to the table tonight is on McKinley to our left toward the Pollan Drive neighborhood, and everything that says trail again, please remember, emergency vehicles need to be able to travel trails, foot paths are definitely just people paths.
There's actually two separate provisions about the path, and then there's one later that says maintenance of the disturbed area shall be the responsibility of the county.
It's worth the letter.
Yeah.
Isn't it? Most didn't say it, no?
Calm.
Good, good catch.
The Butler Trail.
Well, the question, we, I may never fix it before, but it is what it is, they're not nobody.
We also had the final.
Surprise.
Surprise. Good catch.
Make a motion to accept the forest board report.
Second. Call a favor.
Aye.
Any votes? High Memorial Board.
Um, nothing to report to our meeting this month.
And West Reserve, joint fire district.
Also nothing to report.
Okay. Reports from special committees. Communications for residents.
Oh, well done, folks, this is an exciting meeting. You have built new trails, so, thank you for all your hard work. Zetecar, Pollan Manor, sorry.
We know you.
I, I, real quickly, Kathy Lynn, Autumn Lane, um, congrats as well. I don't know whether I would have had the patience that you all illustrated in dealing with a list of suggestions, and I hope that you see them as suggestions until an official survey is taken of village residents who are in fact the people that should have final say as to what goes on in the area, and as a taxpayer, I would hope that you could relay that information as well, that although the Toro's work is very appreciated, we still need input from the residents of the village. And then I have two words, and I know Leah, you're not gonna wanna hear them.
Tree stump.
Stump removal, yes. And that was, I forgot to do that in my earlier report, we would like to pursue putting armor, and of course, we're bringing plants to you.
Wonderful.
Uh, planting more area through the garden, but that stump is, is been in the way for years, and if the village can handle it, let us know, and we'll pursue other options.
I, I knew about this, I knew it was coming, so thank you for the reminder. I did communicate earlier in the week with Chief Baby.
Okay.
Who had said that it would be done in timeframe, you know, I apologize if the weather had some kind of a factor, but he said it would be done, you know, kind of pronto, so.
Excellent.
Because we're gonna be in the Brooklyn Garden, as I mentioned.
Yeah.
On the night, so.
Okay, thank you.
Just keep us updated. Thank you very much. Centennial Garden. Yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much for that.
We'll try back there.
Oh, Gary, do you wanna say something?
Okay. All right, any new business?
Yeah.
Any old business?
About more things.
Any business? Uh, motions, ordinances, and resolutions.
Yes, I have a motion out of our police committee. Okay. Um, I'd like to make a motion to hire Mark Ruth as a part-time police officer, and also a Louis Severola as a reserve police officer.
Second.
Call a favor.
Aye.
Any votes? Thank you.
I'd like to make the motion to waive the three readings to cast an ordinance amending appropriations.
Second.
Your roll call.
Mr. Latanzia?
Yes.
Mr. Moffey?
Yes.
Mrs. Morgan?
Yes.
Mrs. Serna?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Japp?
Yes.
Okay, this is a motion for an ordinance, amending ordinance number 1537-18, permanent appropriations, and to declare an emergency.
Second.
Your roll call.
Mr. Latanzia?
Yes.
Mr. Moffey?
Yes.
Mrs. Morgan?
Yes.
Mrs. Serna?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Japp?
Yes.
Okay. Are you done? Do you wanna do that one more, David?
Okay.
Are you done?
Yes.
I have to make a motion for streets department to erect a temporary gate on College Street once Bova construction is done, with phase two, um, of the building of the forest.
Will it be up?
On College Street?
The temporary gate?
Temporary gate.
Be up for six months, or be up just till the end of the?
No, that will be up after Bova's done, until the Forest Foundation approves the design.
A temporary gate?
Right.
Excuse me, where will it be located?
You can address yours.
Where?
Let him call.
The cross from my driveway?
Yeah.
Yeah. But if you let him call from your driveway and blah, blah, I have to...
Oh, it's going now.
Okay.
And I would just see someone sitting there grabbing a path and driving back, and you're like.
Yeah.
There's no fun. I just have to know, is this going to be out of the forest thing in a line item in the general fund? Is that how you want to show this?
I don't think the forest should pay for it.
Don't look at Mrs. Zetecor, this is the judge's, okay? This is, do we want to?
I'm sorry, Mr. Sernick, but I can look at whoever I want to look at, especially it's time to sign.
General fund, forest line.
I don't know, what does the finance committee say about it?
General fund, cause I, yeah.
General fund.
Then you. Then do we have any idea how much?
I told Russ to be as cheap as possible. But I, I no doubt that the Ford Board Foundation will put a beautiful, get up on that.
And I would still follow.
You want to put some kind of cap on?
You'll follow appropriate channels, you know, because I, this comes your way.
Yeah, but since this is only going to be here for a short while, and since it's not going to be that expensive, which I don't know how much that expensive is.
$200 in the most of the thing.
How much?
$200 in the most.
Because it's only like, it's $250 in that line item right now. So then I'll have to move some money around, but, okay. That's fine, I have enough answers.
Thanks. Thank you, everyone.
You have another one for American Legion?
We actually can do the.
I haven't been seconded.
Second.
Seconded by Martha.
I hired you.
Oh, you did? I hired you. Call a favor, aye, any opposed?
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, I have, no.
$250 for American Legion.
How much?
$250.
Okay. Okay, I'd like to make a motion for an annual Memorial Day donation to Sons of America Legion, $250.
Second.
Call a favor, aye, any opposed? I assume everyone got it, they should have in their boxes, the forms for that parade is 28, which is Monday. So if you're going to go to the parade, or the cemetery, or Kegville, whatever, just any marker response, get that back on those guys. Any other motions, ordinances, or resolutions? Second and third readings. Presentation of the bills.
Make a motion of the bill signature. Second.
Call a favor, aye, any opposed? Questions from the news media. Mark by council, Mrs. Wilson.
I wanted to thank everybody on their hard work, especially tonight with our long, long list of things we were assigned. Good job on taking that on. Kudos to the Pollen Village gardeners for your hard work on the Centennial Garden, and the forest for always being there and after ready. Thank you. Thanks to my fellow council members for your patience tonight.
Mr. Latanzio? Thanks, guys. I apologize for all that, but I think it was necessary to kind of give some, at least some response back, so thank you all for that, and that's all.
We had an interesting meeting there, guys. You know, it's clear to see that people who have ever worked in government, it's a difficult concept for them because things are done so differently, and because you have to have the right authority, and the right organization, and the right place in your books. So it is confusing, and I understand that. It was embarrassing.
All right, Mr. Jash?
Oh, nothing.
Mr. Moffey?
I want to thank Mr. Sernick for this paperwork, it was very nice, thank you. Jane, great job on the mayor's court that you're doing, and good catch on that. I hope that they have to pay something.
I hope so, too.
And the other thing is, I'm told you guys are probably happy with me, I left the other things on the agenda off. And.
So that would be another long meeting next time.
I didn't want really go any further than 9:00, so. You're welcome, everybody.
Mrs. Morgan?
I want to thank Mr. Latanzio for doing some extra duty, and really for being a minch. And I hope that, I don't know if like we're going to draw straws or how we're going to do this, but, but thank you, Mr. Latanzio, for all your work on this project. We very much appreciate everything that you've done.
And last night, Linda and Anthony were there, it's funny because I was talking to them, council never does anything there. So, well, we got a lot of new council members, and I was saying how you had cityscape and brands, and I said about Anthony, so Anthony's new, he's really young, and I didn't really mean it that way, but.
Oh, you totally agree.
But I said his enthusiasm is infectious. I didn't, I didn't think he meant, he didn't, even though I really don't think he does. Nonetheless, it was a good. Yes. That was the first time experience for me. I didn't know how drips went up, I didn't know, you had, you had one of the big ones, I was all confused.
You're a pro.
Thank you, brothers.
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting at 8:50.
Second. Call a favor, aye, any opposed? He's adjourned.
Linda?
Why not? The fourth and 1:00 is good for.